Welcome everybody to another session of our Kubernetes study group. Today, we're gonna try to cover the rest of the scheduling, which we got the resource limits, daemon sets and static pods left. And then we'll go into some logging. And if we have time after that, we'll jump into life cycle management. Should be easy stuff as far as the last pieces of the scheduling. Resource limits. We go into how the scheduler will look at some of the resources and schedule it based on like CPU usage and RAM usage, things like that. So we'll go ahead and just jump right into it. Alright. So they put a part called rabbit. And when I identify CPU requirements set on that part. So as always, do you guys remember from last time? How do we get information on the part that is deployed?
Cube C T L get pods.
Yes, let's do that first. We can get pods to see all of the pods that are currently available in this namespace. As we can see, the container is running into an error. How we go about getting more information on this pod? Can go ahead and describe the pod. That will give us all the details and specifications of the pod that we select. Or we can also use it for any resource as well. It's like deployments, replica sets to get more information on it other than just this one liner. Well, we could also, I haven't tried this before, but can do K get pods. Dash O wide, I believe is the shown wide. That will also give us a little bit more information. But not exactly what we're looking for, like we're getting our P address here. So let's go ahead and describe it. Drive pod. And we're looking for rabbit. Particle rabbit deploy identify CPU requirements sit on this pod. So let's take a look at the specification. We can see here we have our limits and our request. So the difference between limits and requests. We'll go through the requests first. Request is gonna be what does this pod require from the node to be able to run? And this is gonna be one unit of CPU. If the pod does not, if the node does not have one unit of CPU available, this pod will not be able to get scheduled on that node. Limits is gonna be your max. It's more of a restraints that you put on the pod. So if it goes, if it hits the two CPUs, it will actually stop this part from running. Or in the case CPUs, actually, it will, it will just throttle it. In the case of RAM, because of the fact that you cannot throttle RAM. Once something is inside of memory, it is there. That would actually cause it to crash. And it will be an out of, out of memory error. So this is asking us identify CPU requirements. Our requirement is one CPU. So let's go ahead and hit that. They want us to delete the pod. Should be easy. Okay, delete. Pod is deleted. And added some things. So before we go up in there, let's go ahead and check what they added. Okay, get all. Looks like we got our pod elephant. And this is just the default service, so we can ignore that. Okay. So another particle elephant has been deployed in the default namespace. It fails to get ready state expect the part and identified the reason why it is not running. So as we just did, we're gonna go ahead and describe that pod to get more information on it. Let's see what are we getting? I'll check the events here first. Back of restart fail containing memory stress. On the elephant pod. So why are we getting a memory stress? Let's see, reason um killed. So looks like it was AI, it hit its memory limit. And that's what I was mentioning earlier. It ran out of memory and therefore it was terminated. So that's the reason why it's not running. Because it was um killed. Out of memory killed. Starts on memory killed indicates that failing because power ran out of memory. Identify the memory limit set on the pot. That is our Ted. Maybe bytes, I believe is, is MI. Can look that up real quick. Am I submit? Let's check there. By missing limits. Maybe bytes, maybe bytes. There it is. Yep, maybe bytes. Which is, it's just a little bit different than megabytes. Megabytes will be a thousand, maybe bytes is 1,024. So just keep that in mind when it says MI. Alright. The elephant power runs a process that consumes 15 maybe bytes of memory. Increase the limit to 20. So yeah, if it runs 15 maybe bytes or limit says to 10, it runs out of memory. I cannot complete. So let's go ahead, we're gonna update it up to 20 bytes. And to do that, we're just gonna be changing this limit here to 20. Do we remember how we would do that?
You can just add new memory like that? You don't have, what is the capacity?
So in this case, the, we're not adding it to that node. The node has its own memory. And this is just the memory that the pod is using. So we're just adding memory that the pod can utilize from the node. We're not necessarily creating memory out of nowhere.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, it's like, okay, so. So how do we know how much is in the node? So we don't just go over that. Or am I just going too fast, too?
One way I know we can check that is we can just top comment key top. Node, you are getting a little bit ahead of us, but we can take a look at this real quick. Top node.
I mean, that's okay. I didn't, I would say where we get on the extra memory from?
So here's the memory for the control plane. That we have now.
Oh, it's got plenty, okay, nevermind.
Well, this is a control plane. This node, this part is running on assuming not on the control.
It's running on a control plane.
Oh, it is running on a control plane. Okay, so we're good there. So we only have one node here. Okay, get nodes. Okay, so that's why we only have one node available. Okay, but yeah, K top command will list the memory that we have. And CPU as well.
And now we can just expand as much, as much memory as we can for this particular pod. So it can run whatever it needs to run.
Correct, correct. When it comes to the actual nodes themselves, you think of them as VMs. You'd have to actually go ahead and provision some units, some CPU memory. You wouldn't be able to just tell it to use more. I guess you could, but it's not, it's not simple. But yeah, let's go ahead and we're just gonna do an edit on that pod. And where we have container reach our limits. We're just gonna say that they wanna set to 20. And of course, it's gonna fail because this is not one of the, one of the specs that we can just adjust on the fly. So in this case, we have to recreate the pod or replace it. So we're gonna do a replace command. Pass the force. The force makes it that it tells the part to get deleted and then recreate it with the new specs. If you don't pass this is gonna give us the same error that we just saw when we tried to just edit it. So gonna do a force from a file. And we're gonna use a temporary file that it created when we tried to edit it earlier. So every time you
Have to, so we basically have to recreate the whole thing?
Just the pod, just the pod.
That's, we can do that because it's empty though, right?
It's not empty, it has a program running in it. As you can see here, our image, where is our image? Container pollinestress and which looks like it's just a stress test image. But it is an application running in here. So if this wasn't, if this was another application like that needs to be accessed by users. When you create it, yes, you are gonna have downtime. And that's where you can, of course, run deployments. And as we cover later, you could do a rolling deployment where it takes down some of the containers. And some of the other containers stay running. So you always have something that you can connect to. But in this case, we are gonna delete the pod and you'll see it as it does it. I was demonstrate, it deletes it and then it recreates it. And if we do, okay, describe but elephant now if we go up here. We now have 20. And you wanna get into the habit, if you are gonna be taking that test of just confirm that you made the change that you wanted to make. So just do a describe on it. Cause you might think that you actually made it and then you changed the request, which is something that I've done in the past. But yeah, we are now at 20 megabytes as he requested. Let's go, we check, we're good to go. Do you guys understand them? Actually, let's take a look here. As you can see now it is running. And if we do a K get pods. Sometime today. It is ready, running. Next question. And delete the part. So does everybody understand their, how, how the schedule looks at the resources that are required by the container and the limits that are set by the container to then schedule it?
Yeah.
Slow. Cause here's the other thing that is not mentioned in the, in here is if you did have multiple nodes. Here we only have control plane node, but if we did have multiple nodes and another node met their request. This five megabytes, control plane did not have five megabytes. And another one, another node did have it. It would then prefer, the schedule would then prefer to schedule it on that one. Cause of course it won't be able to create on this one. Of course, it's also gonna be checking your tastes and tolerations and labels and all and affinities. But this is also something that it checks as well. If you have it set. And by default, it will also always try to schedule it where he has the most the most amount of memory and CPU. Us to not bottleneck the system. That's if there's no affinity, taste, tolerations, nothing said, said in place. Alright. Any questions on resource limits and requests?
So question, so the resources, that depends on what type of application you're gonna run into, right?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so um, this is something that you're gonna set yourself. Kubernetes does not know what memory CPU your application is gonna use. This is something that you're gonna have to test and find out and add these requirements yourself to then kind of help to direct where you want it to be scheduled at. Otherwise, it's just gonna schedule it based on what is available and what has the most resources available.
And you can set this up with scale, right? Let's say your web, you know, your application is taking a lot of traffic. It might need more memory to process, you know, the request. Is there, that, you know, do you set that up as well to scale?
So this is, as far as the limits, it's more of to prevent it from scaling. It's, it's set up in a way that you don't have an, yeah, exactly. You don't have an application that just eats up all of your resources and then prevents other pods from being able to run. That, that's the, that's the purpose of the limits. The request on the other hand is like that, that's gonna be like, hey, this application needs to have the, this amount of resource to run. It's that is silly set in place for scaling purposes other than, of course, like, yeah, you're able to schedule more pods if they have a cap on how many resources they can use on one node. Does that make sense what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, 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 I get it. It's, it's, it's really the same basics to with the instances, you know, same thing. They have limits, so you can only do so much, yeah, cool.
Alright, let's jump into next guy, daemon sets. So in the case of daemon sets, they're gonna be your like your services that you wanna run on every container. So for the most basic example of this is gonna be something that monitors your environment. If you have permission set up or Grafana. I've never set up, but I'm assuming that they will be set up as daemon sets. And what it does is anytime a new node is created is gonna create that pod on that node in your cluster. So you're always gonna have that part running on every node. An example of this is gonna be or Kublet might actually be a static pod that we're gonna get into later on. To here. But it, it just think of them as like agents that run every single pod or at every single node in your cluster. I'll think of an example later on. Q proxy, that, that's a usually a daemon set. So the Q proxies, you're gonna be your, your pod that manages your networking. And you're gonna need that on every single node that is created. So and every single pod that's created, node that's created, so then you will set it up as a daemon set. I, how many daemons are created in the cluster in all namespaces? Key, get, we can do ideas. A lot of these I've found out that they have shorthands that we can use. We're gonna do a K get DS. All. So we don't want all, we want all namespaces. Just dash A. So here's our Q proxy and our cube flannel DS. Don't know what flannel is, but it is a daemon set that we have set up. And as you can see right now, there's only one because that means there's only one node. One node, so sorry, not to hit two. Which namespace is the Q proxy daemon set in? It's gonna be in our cube system namespace. And which of the below is a daemon set? Does anybody wanna take a guess at this one?
Somebody give it a shot?
Was it scheduler? I don't know.
Your daemon sets are gonna be indicated by
Oh, that's that's right. Flannel, yeah.
Yep. And if we wanna look at that one core DNS here. It looks like it is just a pod that is running. It's CD master is also a pod. And we'll get into this later, but as you can see, has control plane, the node's name on the back end of it appended to it. That means it's actually running as a static pod. Then we'll get all into that in a second here. And safety with the scheduler. So our answer is gonna be our flannel DS. I mean, those are the parts scheduled by the daemon set Q proxy. Unless they've changed something. It is one. What is the image pod deployed? So do you guys remember how we find out the image? That is being used for a specific pod?
Why do the describing again?
Yes, yes, let's go. Describe. And gonna do a daemon set cube. But does it think it's a, oh, cause it's gonna, we have to specify the namespace. Cause it's not in your default namespace. And cube flannel is running cube flannel namespace. SKU file DS. Alright, and template. But actually look to this, so we have an init container. We're gonna look, cover that later on. So we're just gonna ignore that for now. Just look at their actual containers. And here's our cube flannel container. And the image we're using is Docker I O Ranger. Blah, blah, blah. Just a quick. Just gonna mention this, but we'll get into it later on. In, in the containers are gonna be your containers that is gonna, they're gonna initialize the pod. If their commands in these containers do not run properly or complete, the pod will not be able to get scheduled. And you see those commands here. And yeah. But we'll get into that later on. Deploy daemon set, sorry.
Is there a better way to search besides just scrolling up and down? Like, is there like a grab for this?
I got you, of course, you can always, you can always pipe this. And you can do grep. And yeah, this is recommended because you'll get into some of these that are extremely long, especially if you're looking at deployments and some other things. And in that previous question, it was asking us for image. So we can search image here and you wanna do dash I. Uh, I would do at the C. So you can see all the, everything around it, the before and after, five lines and image. And containers image Docker I O right here.
Okay. I didn't know if it was in Kubernetes or not, but I was like, it's gotta be a better way to search.
It wouldn't be, it's not Kubernetes, then it's just a Linux thing, you know? You can, you can always pipe things into grep or awk and grab the information that way.
Awk, yeah, okay.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, let's deploy daemon set for fluent de-logging, use the given specifications. Don't quite remember how to do this, but we can figure it out together. Okay. Create. Creating a daemon set. Now, now deployment. See if it takes that. I might have to spell out daemon set. The name, they said they wanted to be named Elastic Search. And namespace. Cube dash system. Oh, did it delete my thing? Oh, no. That back. Image. Got an image. And let's, let's just do the image and see what, what error gives me. Okay, create daemon say Elastic Search namespace cube system unless to put, well, let's go ahead and hit enter. I like the flag image. Trying to demon. Okay. Okay. Not creating a daemon set. So that case, go to our trusty documentation. The sets, create a daemon set. We'll probably, this probably needs to be created from a file. Is that the exact ones that we're making? Yes.
At YAMO, like you did with the replica set?
Correct. We'll just copy this. Yeah, we'll copy this whole thing. Alright, daemon set. Uh, fluent E. YAMO. Restart that. And we wanna change some of the specifications here. The name, they want Elastic Search. Space cube system. Labels, they don't specify labels, so we can leave that alone. I'm gonna change all of these fluent E Elastic Search. Have a fancy. Have a fancy. Alright. And the image. Tellerations, here's our image. Change that. Should be good to leave everything else as is. Okay, create dash F. Do describe. And we just wanna confirm that our image looks good. And it is in Cube System and the name is good, so. Good stuff. Right, uh, is it? Any question on the purpose of daemon sets? Just to summarize real quick, the daemon sets are used to run monitoring agents or. Uh, in the case of cube proxy, you can use it to run. Uh, networking agents on all of the different nodes that we have in place. And that way, whenever you add a new node, it will automatically create that pod on that node.
So this has to come with every new node that comes on board, and. You just script it to where it will automatically load up on every new node?
Yeah, once this is in place, like we have Elastic Search here in place, every node that is added to the cluster. This will automatic, it would automatically just add this part to that node.
Okay. So I have a question, so go. Nodes don't just count automatically with daemons, they, you have to add this?
Well, as far as.
Or this is something special.
So as far as daemon says, as long as a node comes into a cluster and it is under. A specific master node. All the node, all the daemon says that are scheduled are the master nodes. You won't have to do anything, they will automatically be created on those slave nodes.
Oh, but you have to set this one on the master nodes, put that to happen.
Yeah, you'd have to have a configured, well, how we can just configure it just now, you'd have to have it configured.
Okay, that makes sense, dude.
Alright. Keep it pushing, they believe static pods are next. Static pods are next. Uh, with static pods, the use for static pods is gonna be in the case where. You have a node that does not have, well. You have a node that either does not have access to the master node for the scheduler there. Or you just want it to be able to, for these. For these pods to be created without needing a master node, so this is gonna be like your kubelet. And if you remember, kubelet is gonna be. Their controller on each separate node that then schedules the pods. Uh, in accordance to what the master node tells it to. Uh, is gonna connect to the Qube API server. And the control manager is gonna send instructions based on the information that the kubelet provides to the API server. Uh, but yeah, um, so you would want that to always be available on each of the nodes that are spun up. Uh, because you can't do nothing without that, uh, so you have to have a way. To create the part without using the cube scheduler or any other component that is on, gonna be on the master node. So, in this case, we have our static pods, which are configured on the node itself, you have a, a manifest file that is. On the node, and. They, you can read that file and create those pods, uh, as necessary. Okay, so let's go ahead and start this lab. Sorry, I may have. I described it a bit wrong, the kubelet is not gonna be one of the past parts, static pods. The kubelet is then able to read the manifest file and create static pods without the direction from the master node. Hopefully, did, does anybody have any questions on that? Of course, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna get into it, so then you can ask any questions as you, as you get them. So I may study packs, pods exist in a cluster in all namespaces, so we'll do a K get. Get pods, dash capital A to check all namespaces, and the way you can tell. What a stat, which one is a static pod is gonna be. If you look, it's gonna have the name of the node attached to the end of it. So here we have our SCD control plane, API server, a controller and scheduler, they are all set as static pods. So we have one, two, three, four of them. Okay, which of the below components is not deployed as a static part? And. As we can see here, we listed all the other one, core DNS is gonna be one that's. As you can see, it's not set up as a static part, it is probably either a daemon set or a replica set, okay, good. We're gonna do all namespaces. See, coordinate namespace. Or DNA is, is a deployment. And deployments actually do, they use replica sets, uh, to run their orchestration. That's why you see the replica set as well, so yeah, uh, coordinate is not gonna be a static part. Which of the below components not deployed as a static part, which is not this, which is the block was not deployed as a static part. Cube proxy, yep, cube proxy is not. Because in this case, cube proxy is. A daemon set. On which those are the static parts created currently? Then there's only one node available, well, let's confirm that. There's two nodes available. And we can do. Try something. Dash O wide, see if that tells us. Uh, we're gonna do all namespaces. See, what does it give us here? Node, okay, perfect. So. Our SCD looks like control plane for all of them. You can see right here for the node that they're on, the only ones that are scheduled are node O one is gonna be your cube flannel and proxy. So, control plane. What is the path of directory holding the static part definition files? Okay, so the way we find that out. Cuz, uh, it's gonna be a definition file that's telling the node where, what needs to be created. And typically, the first place you would wanna check is your SCD, your Etsy Kubernetes, um, directory. We'll just check there first. And this is not gonna be Kubernetes, this is just gonna be on the. Control plane node itself. Can do a LS slash Etsy. See what we got here, uh, no. Ladies, what we have in here? Manifest, and usually they're in here, and see, we can see all four of them, SE, cube API. Cube Controller, Cube Schedular. So, that's where they're stored. And. Uh, we can play around with it a little bit. We do, uh. Move. Can probably move the API server, why would we do that? Uh, no, let's do that, see. We might break, I, I don't know if this works, so we might break it. In the case it does break, we'll just have to restart. Uh, so yeah, we're gonna just move the. It'll be alright, this is, this, that's what testing advice is for. Uh, yeah, don't do this in production, um, I take no, no accountability if you do this in production. So yeah, we're just gonna move it one directory up, and Kubernetes should know as soon as that's moved. The, go ahead and, oh, it's not gonna, it's not gonna work because. Because we don't have our SCD, so the way this works usually is gonna, is gonna make a call to the API server. Uh, then to the control manager, and the control manager is gonna check our SCD to see if. If. The, what is available out there, um. In this case, it's not gonna work because there's no SCD, so we're gonna go ahead and cancel that. And what we're gonna do is move that file back. And as you can see, like it happens instantly, as soon as you move it out of there, it will get rid of that, that pod. Manifest. Over here. Tapping arrow. Oh, it deleted it. Why did it delete it? I guess they have something set up that, um, you can't move the files into the directory to just delete it. That's alright, we'll recreate it. But yeah, that, that's what will happen if you delete your. Etsy. Your data store.
Oh boy.
So, so Etsy manifest is what you wanted to. Move, but, um, moving it actually destroyed the pod.
Um, I moved it one directory up, but there's something in place probably that doesn't let you create files in the. Directory, so as soon as I moved it, it probably just deleted it.
Okay.
Cuz it wasn't, it wasn't in the directory that I moved it to afterwards. To file, yeah, we just did this one, it was manifest. For the fish file, but there's a step pod definition files. Oh, kubelet, they got me there. Alright, so we're back where we were, how many pod definition files are present in that directory, we could do LS slash. Let's see, Kubernetes manifest. And we have four files in here, SCD dot YAMO. Wanna test something real quick, actually. Touch. Why did it not move it before? So let's see, create it in there, uh. I'm gonna play around with it later on, if I, if I really get curious. Alright, so I mean, pod definition file that present in manifest directory, we got four. What is the Docker image used to deploy the Qube API server as a static pod? So, can go ahead, K. Oh no, in this case, we're just gonna do a Vim. See, Coop, man, API. And we're just gonna. And here we have, um, something that you're gonna wanna know is also we have our options here. And that'll come into play in this, in a minute here, but our image here is gonna be registry Q API server one, two, seven. That, oh. Okay, create study part, name static busy box, they use busy box image that would have commenced sleep one thousand. So, to do so. Guys, remember, we're gonna create a pod without actually creating a pod, we're gonna do a dry run. And then use that YAMO file to add it to that manifest, so let's do a K run. And the pod name should be static busy box. Box image should be busy box. On client. Done, you. Curious now, I don't think I need that, can do dry run client. And output, we want it to be YAMO. And we wanna put it into a file called, just do. Tbox dot YAMO. Oh, doesn't like it, so we do have to put an equal sign. Alright. Um, and. We didn't complete that whole thing, cuz it does also want us to do the command sleep one thousand, so over here for the container. So make sure we have it correctly. So, it's gonna be in line. So, command. Sleep. And the parameter that we want, one thousand. And I wanna do K create dash F busy box and I wanna do another dry run. Okay, so it does create it, so we're good. So then I wanna go ahead and move that manifest. Box the yamo to slash Etsy. Eighties. And it fast. Up when I have it in here. And as soon as we do that, K get pods. Choose start creating it. Doesn't like it. See why. Oh, so I missed up the command. The spacing. I could do it this way. Just gonna do it, the whip have it here, just so check that out later. Oh, you know what it is? Okay, yep, that's what it was. Yep, ready commands, you have to put quotations around the commands that you're running.
Got it, yeah.
I would my run into an issue because I created it while it was also being created as a static pod. I don't know how that interaction works. But if we do K give pause dash A, there's our static pod right there. Alright, and we can give it a check, looks good. Edit the image of steady party is this box. Okay, yeah, so you can always edit it by just doing a vim on it. And changing the image in here. Same, we just did, we just edited that commander a second ago. Yeah, don't get tricked. As soon as you did, you hit insert, for whatever reason, he moves that. But yeah, uh, one point twenty eight point four. And if we do K. Describe pod. Already recreated. She's still, still showing that old image. But you see here, it is in the process of killing it. So it's gonna kill it and recreate it. If we do another K, it's still killing it, K get pause dash A, dash W. Oh. Okay, so yeah, terminating, creating, and we have our new one here. Should have the new image. Alright. Let's see. Let's create a new static part named static green box. Let's find the box, K get pods dash A. Static green box, and you can see right here, you can see that is on node oh one. So for starters, we know that our file is now gonna be on on control plane. So we have to jump over to the different node. You can do so by S H, S H. Moving over to it. Such S S H. Wow, my brain is not working right now. It's S S H, right? Uh, no.
Yeah, that's insane.
Node oh one. Alright, so now we're on node oh one, and we're gonna first check our manifest. So let's do an ls. Slash. Let's see. Kubernetes. Manifest. And there's nothing in here. So, next thing, we can check the process uh, of the kubelet. Cause the kubelet is the one that's gonna know where to pull the static, the static pods from. So let's do a P S dash A U X. Okay. Looking for kubelet service. To kubelet, bootstrap kubeconfig. Get more of this to show. There we go. Much better. kubelet kubeconfig. kubeconfig. Is our config file. Fairlib kubelet config, so that's where we wanna jump over to. And slash fair. But config yamo. And here we wanna check its options. Don't see options. Alright, we, we're gonna get to learn together now. Oh, here, these are our options right here. Static pod path, that's what we're looking for. And it's in Etsy just to mess with you. Threw me off because the green color, never seen it like that. Yeah. We're gonna look in here. For our static, the static pods path. S C just to mess with you, so we're gonna go ahead, get out of here, then did I copy it? I hope I copied it. Oh, that's a directory. And that's the, that's our green box yamo. It wanted us to delete it, so once again, we're gonna try our move. Let's see, yeah, well. Uh, one directory up. And curious. L S. Oh, this is just Do you guys know, is this, is this something I'm missing with move command? It should move it to this directory.
Might be the parent directory that you're moving it to.
Yeah, the parent directory should be the just to mess with you. Should be in here. Might be something that they have set up working in the background. See, as you can see, again, I moved the green box yamo one there, two direct, one directory up, right? That's what two dots signify. But the file's not there. But that is not part of the test, they wanted us to do that. Let's go ahead and exit out of the, that node. And do a K, get pause dash A. And as you can see, our green box is no longer there. Yep. So let's give it a check. We're good. Any questions on static pods? To give the sleep command effect it being seen, uh, with the sleep command. No, so with the sleep command, usually it will run on a pod and then uh, once the pod, once the sleep command completes, it will just exit that pod. Cause you, if you don't know, uh, with the purpose of these pods is to run an application that's on it. Uh, so if if your only command that's running through that part is gonna be your sleep command. Once the sleep command completes, that part has no further purpose, so it's gonna delete itself. But no, it would not. You would still see it here. Uh, it would not say ready, it would say zero out of one ready, but it would say complete here. As a com, the com, the command is completed.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, because you were looking earlier for the pod and we couldn't see it. So I didn't know the sleep was running and that's what made it not be seen. But yeah.
When we did the sleep on, was it this guy here? Box.
I think it was just getting created, so we were kinda ahead. It was getting destroyed and then recreated, so.
So with
That's what it was.
And with this one, it does have this image busy box, so it's gonna stay open, like it's not gonna, it's still gonna run busy box on it after the command completes. It's not gonna delete itself. But yeah, um. Should be all set. Alright. Next, uh, we have our multiple schedulers. Do we have? So there's no practice test for multiple scheduler, but I can just go over it real quick. In the case of multiple schedulers, is, it says, as it says, is you have multiple schedules in one environment. And the reason you would have that set up that way, it would be, um, because you could, you can you can set up your custom scheduler. So you can actually like make your own schedule, you don't have to use the Kubernetes provider scheduler. That, and in that case, uh, it will use the whatever algorithm that you set up to schedule pods. And this will be like if you have certain pods that have to follow a different scheduling procedures than your main pods, and therefore you would specify on those uh, pods or deployments. Use the scheduler instead. Uh, another, like, another way that um, people would use this is if you have a multi-tenant environment. And you need to separate all resource users. In that case, you would have a scheduler set up for each tenant. And lastly, you can also have uh, H, uh, high availability setup. Where you just have multiple schedulers that all work in tandem to accomplish the same thing. Uh, in that case, you would have to elect one of the schedulers as a leader. And it would kind of just manage uh, what scheduler gets what process to, what part to schedule. Uh, but you gotta remember, of course, uh, you are using resources creating multiple schedulers. Although it does increase the speed, uh, which pods get scheduled and the, the chances that if one goes down, then, then uh, you still have another one available. You gotta also weigh that against the extra resources that you now providing to the schedulers. And it's kind of like, you're, you're gonna do the, the calculation to find the best setup for you, for your environment. Yeah, there's no, it's no practice test for schedulers. Alright, we can go ahead and jump into the login, there's only oh, there's three in here. There was only two. No, there's a lot more than three. I'm in the wrong one, that's why, okay. Logging. Yes, there's only two. Like it's pretty simple, you know, it's gonna be your events eh, that are on each pod. And you can view those to do your troubleshooting, it's, it's gonna be very important for you to be able to efficiently read those logs to then go ahead and uh, like find where the issue is, is at. Uh, we'll get into some of the logs for applications, like for each uh, specific pod. Uh, how to troubleshoot those. Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and just jump right into it. And of course, you're gonna have um, your applications that use, make use of those logs to then create graphs and things for you to more easy, more easily see what's going on in your Kubernetes, uh, like uh, Grafana, Prometheus. And so on. Alright, so we already deployed a few pods running workflows, pick them. Uh, so let's K get all of, well, let's just check only the pods. But we got uh, elephant, lion, rabbit, I'm assuming that's the ones they want us to look at. And yeah. Let's deploy metric server to monitor the parts and notes pool get repository deployment file. So let's go ahead and clone this guy. And this is gonna be our metric server. Uh, thing with metric server that you need to know, it does work a little different than your typical like Grafana, Prometheus, uh, it runs in memory. So therefore, it does not have any persistent um, login or It runs in memory, so therefore it does not have any persistent, um, login or metrics. Once the pod node goes down, all the data is lost. Alright. Deploy metric server by creating all the components downloaded, run cube cuddle create dash F, so assuming gave us a YAMO file. Just see. Oh. This Kubernetes was in here. Okay. So we can do K create. F. Kubernetes. Everything in here. Create everything in there. Alright, so. Sit. Our metric server has been deployed. I may for the metric server start generating logs, run the keep C T L top node. So as we, we played with a little earlier, K top node. We're gonna be able to see that the top processes that are running on the, on the node. Oh, okay, so this is just actually gonna be. The CPU and usage of each node. Uh, we'll do a K top pods to see the top pods and what they're utilizing from the node. Alright. File it output. Okay. Alright, send something, a lot of stuff up. Identify the node that consumes the most CPU cores and we're looking at a node, so K top node. Uh, the most CPU usage is gonna be our control plane. And that's obvious because we have all of our control plane architecture, our master node architecture on there. So, CPU cores. Next, define node that consumes the most memory. In bytes. Alright, so. Same case is gonna be the control plane. Define pod that consumes the most memory. Default things be, so now we're looking at the pods and it's the same thing, K. Top pods. Most, and we're looking for memory, it's gonna be this guy here, our rabbit. Least CPU cores. It's gonna be our line. And that's it. Rather than we can go more into the metric server. Maybe on the next one. Alright, that's pretty self-explanatory. Do we have any questions on our top command inside of Kubernetes? And top command, you can, it's also, it's a Linux command as well, so you can use it to get your CPU and memory usage in Linux as well. Alright, managing applications. This one's a little bit more fun. Uh, if I remember correctly. Deploy the pod hosting an application. Let's go ahead and. We'll just jump right into describe. Uh, pod. Web app. What we got here? It's running, running. Web app. Event simulator. Okay. Wait for it to start, it just started. A user five is expressed concerns accident application. Identify the cause of the issue. So. Here we're gonna get into the logging. Uh, what we can do. Is if we can find where does it store its logs. Tell us here. Service accounts. Oh, doesn't tell us. Volumes kubepr. B S config map. But. No worries. Kubernetes has its own feature to check the logs for whatever resource that you're looking at. And, uh, feature is gonna be our Kubernetes, kube C T L logs. And by the way, I've been using the K. That's just a shorthand for Kubernetes, cube cuddle or kube C T L. Same thing, yeah, think about it like an alias, alias. Alright, so K logs. And we're looking at the pod here. Was it a pod? Web app, okay. And here's our logs, and of course you get a wall, a wall of text. So in this case, they're asking for what issue is user five having. So we're gonna do a. Uh, grep. We can do a grep here. And we're gonna be looking, uh. User five, well, not key, the, uh, dash I makes it not key sensitive, so then we can do the user five. And here we get all the logs for user five. So user five has failed to log in as their account is locked due to too many failed attempts. So that is our, it's, uh. Alright, we have deployed a new pod, web app two, outstanding application, inspected and wait for it to start. See. This one, we have two containers instead of this pod. One is the same event simulator. And the next one is busy box database. Okay, and it's running, so let's go ahead and move on. A user is reporting issues while trying to purchase an item. Identify the user and the cause of the issue. Alright, so let's do, it's gonna be the same thing, K logs. To. Grab. Said. An issue, well, we don't know enough information to grep. So let's go ahead and just do. They're reporting issue while trying to purchase an item. Just look at what's, what we got going on. Older field that are stuck. Have this and fail attempts. They're talking about issue with purchasing item. Uh, we see here. This looks like it's related, so let's also check this. See if anybody else is having that issue. Pods. Okay. Probably well. There we go. Warning, it's like it's just user thirty that's having issue with that and expect the last web app pod. Identify the user and the cause of the issue. So it's user thirty and items that are stuck. Alright, any questions on checking logs? For each pod.
Logs are ongoing though, right? So if, if this is like a real situation, you will have to stop it at some point so you can do the grep, right?
Uh, no, so, uh, with the grep, it's just gonna pull what is available at that time. It's not gonna. It's not gonna keep monitoring that log page unless you specify a dash W on it for, to watch the logs. Um, in which, in which case, yeah, see, one day, let's see. Dash W actually a command here. Oh, so it's not actually a flag. Do what we, what do we have? Tail. Probably last lines.
That's what I was wondering too about tail. Could we use head and tail just to? Look at those.
Looks like it, looks like you can.
Mm-hmm.
I was who, I was wondering if there was one where you can just keep watching it, but I don't see an option for that. Pretty close.
It has a max log request though.
Maximum number of concurrent logs to follow when you. Okay, yeah.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah. But, uh, you can also do, okay. Wanted to do describe. Let's see if in this one. Someone else is gonna tell us where the logs are. You can sometimes find where the logs are being stored at. And then you can go to the file specifically.
I, I, I wouldn't want to modify the logs.
You, you wouldn't, yeah, you wouldn't wanna modify them. It's just, you can override user thirty, interesting. See, what is? Uh, we don't have permissions.
Don't break the system.
Yeah, we already did that once, so we're not gonna, once is enough for today's session.
No, I appreciate you looking into it though, but I, I just wondered if that was possible. It, it's good that you can look at tail. At least, so then you won't have to, uh, climb through all the logs from all time or something, you know?
Yep. Yep. Any other question on the logs? With that, I will conclude today's session. As always, if you're watching the replay and you found this info valuable, please like and subscribe. If you look at join a study group, shoot me a message on LinkedIn. I left the link in the description. And of course, thank you for watching, and I will see you on the next one.